So, good evening and welcome everybody to the City of Lake Forest Park City Council Work Session for Thursday, November thirteenth. I'd like to call the meeting in order at six P M. Do I hear a motion for adoption of the agenda?
Second.
Moving second, any questions or comments? It's adopted by unanimous consent. Thank you, everybody. We have two topics tonight. First of all, purchase of four ATS Speed Alert twenty-four radar message sign trailers. And we also have the budget proviso after that. Chief Harden, do you have a floor?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. So I do have a guest with me, Colton Lassard with Flock, because that's going to be a discussion that we're going to have today. It does say purchasing, but today is really just about a discussion about the products and then kind of that first touch. So the traffic calming group is looking to purchase four ATS Speed Alert twenty-four radar message sign trailers with license plate reader capability to replace our city's twenty-year-old radar trailer. These are solar-powered, ultra-portable trailers that can be deployed by one person. I'm going to talk about four main purposes. One is speed feedback, traffic data collection, speed volume, community notifications, and then public safety intelligence benefits. This demonstrates the city's commitment to traffic safety. The ATS five, and there's a picture up here on the screen of different views of it. It's described as extremely affordable, lightweight, compact, easily moved from needed locations, and supports one-person setup. The trailer is built for durability. Power options include a deep-cycle batteries with solar power panels, allowing autonomous operation, wireless data downloads. And because it's mobile, a trailer can serve multiple locations over a year rather than requiring permanent installations at each site. And having just gone through the detour at Thirty-Fifth and Ballinger, these units would have been a huge resource. Speed feedback, first one. So it reminds drivers of their actual speed, encouraging voluntary compliance with speed limits and reducing speed in key areas such as school zones in our neighborhoods. It visibly demonstrates proactive efforts to improve roadway safety, showing residents the city's commitment to reducing speed and enhancing livability. Currently, we have one traffic trailer that is twenty years old, is large and cumbersome, takes up a lot of room in our parking area, and the PD does not have enough space to, and it loses its charge much faster. Takes about a day to charge. It's not solar, and it's really not easy to deploy. Paired with our speed, paired with the Speed Alert twenty-four radar message, the trailer supports feedbacks displaying like your speed, some of those examples that's up there. And it changes how fast depending on, it changes depending on how fast the vehicle is going. So, for example, drivers going under the speed limit might see "thank you for driving safely", or above the speed limit might see "slow down". So deploying the trailer in a school zone, neighborhood complaint, location, or event shows active enforcement and outreach. The speed feedback sign visually helps communicate. We're monitoring speeds and elevates community trust and awareness, and more on that in community notifications. The second thing is traffic data collection. It gathers valuable data on vehicle speeds, volumes, peak hours, useful for our enforcement planning, grant application, and our traffic studies. Traffic calming uses data collectors, and recently we purchased another set of data collectors with updated capabilities. The old ones only lasted a few days and don't have these updated capabilities like Bluetooth. The speed display signs would be that force multiplier. The ability to capture vehicle speeds and volumes mean we can provide reports to the traffic calming group, and if needed, City Council, partner agencies, or our internal departments like Planning and Public Works. We can also use this data to show like average speed reduced, for example, speeds from thirty-two to twenty-seven after deployment. And then community notifications. So they're portable and multipurpose, allowing deployment in high-need areas or special events. So like for the July, our boat parade, events at our parks. We can display public safety messages and emergency notifications like road closures, community events, silver or amber alerts, and temporarily to target roads for traffic enforcement campaigns like click-it-or-ticket, distracted driving enforcement. We can also deploy for specific enforcement blitzes like back-to-school, community events like Walk to School Day, neighborhood meetings, National Night Out. And then fourth is the public safety benefits, LPRs when coupled with mobile units. So LPRs are automated license plate readers. They enhance crime prevention, detection, investigations by identifying stolen vehicles, wanted subjects, missing persons, and vehicles involved in criminal activity. Investigative support, it helps solve cases by providing timestamp images and vehicle movement data used by detectives and officers to find and work leads. Real-time alerts to officers to improve response time and increase recovery rates for stolen vehicles and missed persons, and supports regional collaborations with neighboring jurisdictions through secure, policy-driven data sharing. No facial recognition or personal data collection. Data is retained for a limited duration under policy with strict access controls and audit logs. Data is secured, is stored securely, and accessed only for legitimate law enforcement purposes under strict policy. And it's efficient and allows officers to focus on proactive policing rather than the manual checks that we currently do. So let's briefly talk about Flock. These units have been optional, or these units have optional mounting for LPRs, including Flock systems. Flock has been in the news recently, and I've had several questions come up about it. So I invited Flock here today with Colton to answer anything that may come up. A quick overview of Flock LPRs, these systems provide real-time alerts to law enforcement in commercial and residential settings to identify vehicles tied to criminal activity. They significantly speed up the process of locating vehicles of interest. Over seventy-five police agencies in Washington currently use the system out of two hundred and seventy statewide. In our region, that's including Linwood, Mount Lake Terrace, Quiet Hill, Edmonds, Key County Sheriff's, Midian, and Redmond. Flock's been in the news largely for two issues, data access and public disclosure. So data access, a national story involving ICE gaining access through a department had open access settings. In Washington, we have strict guardrails prohibiting that type of access. For LFP and most Washington agencies, our data would be blocked from any federal ICE use for immigration. Access would be close to outside agencies like our records management system. So like we have a records management system that agencies do not have access to go into unless we specifically allow it, like our NORCOM agencies. And then access would be close to outside agencies like our recommend, okay? And then only granted on a case-by-case basis, like detectives requesting information for specific criminal investigations. And then the second issue was public disclosure. Washington's public disclosure laws are much broader than any other state or many other states. Flock considers the data to belong to the agency, meaning LFP's data would be subject to disclosure. Agencies choose how long the data is retained, typically thirty to ninety days. And because of implied privacy concerns, this has been a major discussion point statewide. So due to these two unresolved issues, I chose to pause any requests for this product until either common grounds reached or legislators in the next session establish clear guidelines that make sense for our agencies. I want to emphasize that Flock is an excellent tool when used properly. However, I'm not willing to adopt a system that creates significant public disclosure burdens or introduces privacy concerns for our community. So, thank you for listening. Now I'll go with questions. I got Flock here. If you got Flock questions, I'll take any questions on the units themselves with traffic safety and those kind of things. Anybody want to start it off?
Sure.
Please.
I also think that Flock can be a very good tool if used properly, but that's the, that's the word, the active word here is used properly. And you know, the right now, I just looked up Redmond, Linwood, Brenton, Auburn, Muckelteo, Lakewood, Stanwood, and Cedar Woolley have just turned their Flocks off. So they're not doing it because of the privacy concerns, and it's not, that doesn't really have much to do with Flock themselves. It has to do with who has the ability to access it and, and what the community might feel if they know that they're being watched like that. And there's also some courts that have said, hey, Flock data is a, it's public access. So that means anybody could do a public records request. So there's been a couple of courts that have, that have said that that is that way. So while I also think it's a good tool, and I would be in support of it if it had better controls, I think that we're not quite there yet because it's still so new that there's a lot of cities that are, you know, they're turning it off so that they can, they allow more time to figure out what they can do.
So I'll just kind of correct one thing. They're not turning it off and not using it completely. They're just putting a pause on the system. So they're not actually using, but they still have the system in place.
Yes, correct.
And none of the ICE investigations that were going on were happening with any of those agencies. So they're, they're just being due diligence. So, and I agree with everything you said. Did you have a question in there?
Well, what I guess what I would say that if ICE wanted to access Flock data in Lake Forest Park, would they be able to do it?
Not at all.
But they found workarounds, though.
So I would like to have Colton explain what the idea of these workarounds, because my, my belief was you have an open system with an agency, and this open system shares with other agencies. And a particular agency wanted the data through ICE, and they went through an agency to get to it. So if Colton can kind of explain how the data can be locked down or not accessed, better than me.
Yeah, no, that, thanks for teaming me up there, Chief. Exactly as he was explaining, so there was two varietals of ways that federal agencies were able to essentially access us data within the state of Washington. There's something called the National lookup Tool that most agencies, when they signed up with Flock, just automatically turn that on. Essentially, that just means they auto-accept any request from any law enforcement agency in the nation. And at the time when we set that up, federal and state agencies were not separated. At this time, as of June, those two are now separated. Federal agencies are no longer a part of the National lookup or the State lookup Tool. They have to request one-to-one direct sharing to gain any access of your city's data. So now we have put those guardrails in place because we recognize that that was an error of the system previously for not having that specific distinction between federal and state agencies. Transparently, the National lookup Tool, we've just advised all of our partners in Washington State, new and current, to just turn off the National lookup, so we know exactly who we're sharing our data with and when we have made that share request. So as Chief was saying previously, only on a case-by-case basis would he accept share requests from other agencies, whether it's from a detective who's in an active investigation, they need to access Lake Forest Park's data. You know exactly why and who's accessing that. Otherwise, you're turning off any sort of auto-accept capabilities, so you have an idea of exactly who you're sharing that data with.
And just to kind of, it's a little bit apples to oranges, but we do this with Axon, all of our body worn cameras. It is shut down to only those that we allow access to.
Councilmember Saunders.
Yeah, hi, Chief. I just had a quick question. It says the annual subscription is five thousand dollars. And would that also come out of the traffic calming budget?
Well, the, the cameras themselves can also supply traffic data, and Colton can speak a little bit about that. So that's where you can say that it could come from that. If it didn't, it may have to come from a different font.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Riddle.
So, couple of questions. The size, I know that we don't have a ton of shoulders in the community, and I think placing these can be somewhat challenging due to that. Do you think this is all enough to be deployable through most of our city streets?
I do. And they do, the officers, generally it's going to be our traffic safety, our traffic support officer that puts these out. And our support officer before that would be the general ones. Back about ten years ago, it was officers throughout different days, but they generally find the best place because these, these officers are very good about safety on our roadways, and they're not going to put it in the middle of a roadway. They know it's going to be blocking, so they're very cognizant of that. And these, this is not a whole lot bigger than the unit that we currently have. It's a little bit bigger on the top portion, but not the trailer size with cross.
Obviously, we don't want to block any pedestrian pathways either, so just find a gap space. And then the other piece is, I know you're saying we're not doing Flock right now. One of the concerns is when you are directly approached by another agency, that they may not be working in good faith. And we've seen some non-Washington State agencies that have done this in the past. So I think it's just really, I think really hard about how we're going to deploy something like this because we want to trust all the other police agencies, but sometimes it's not possible.
So you do have to put trust in myself and running the organization. And over the last twenty years, we've been using plenty of different tools, investigative tools, where we share with different agencies all the time. So generally, it's going to come from like, say, a detective has a criminal bulletin, and they're looking for a particular car with a sticker that's got a flame on it with this color. And then they would reach out and say, hey, we're looking for this homicide suspect. This is the vehicle there. That's where it'd be appropriate. If they were coming in saying, we're helping out ICE with an immigration issue, all of our officers, our detectives know that is not going to be happening. Sorry, we can't help you. But generally, those agencies wouldn't be asking those questions unless they're a federal agency because pretty much every agency is under the Keep Washington Working Act and has to follow those policies.
I'm sort of referencing the Texas case, where it was a Texas police officer who was looking for an individual who had supposedly broken their abortion laws. And that individual fled the state, and they tracked her down by saying that she was, you know, wanted for, you know, in a death case or something, which looks really good on paper, but it wasn't really what they were looking for her for, so.
We have policies on that, too.
Yeah, so I just, you know, I trust us. It's just how do we filter if we were to go this way? So I think that's some policies that we'd like to see have come up from us. How do we protect ourselves from that?
We do have a Flock policy that was built way prior to us actually looking at getting it, and those are the kind of protections that would be in there.
Thank you.
Yeah, just more of a lighter question, logistically speaking. So right now, we have the one large unit. It's parked in the parking lot. With these four units, obviously they're smaller. How do you secure them, or do you need additional storage space that we need to contemplate, or how does that work?
Great question. I have to work with our Public Works Director on space, maybe a public works that has that area. We also have our Sallyport on the side that we probably park them in there, depending on how we're using them or when we're using them. But that is a greater conversation about how we are pretty stuffed at City Hall and our storage and just offices, the whole, that's a whole entire topic right there. But we would get work.
Cool. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll start by saying I share my fellow councilmembers' concerns about privacy. In particular, last week, a judge in Skagit County ruled that block were public records, and so that could end up short-circuiting a lot of these protections. And so I'd want us to have a very full-throated approach. My questions for you on other topics. I think the value in this session, like, first off, the value is in speed control and data on traffic comment. So I think that's the real use. I'm curious, what made you choose four units?
It just made sense where we have, generally, when areas come in, we like to have both directions. And having, it's like two different areas is what we'd be able to work. But for, when you look at the detour that we had with Thirty-Fifth and Ballinger, the closure, that's where we really needed four to six units because of how many directions we were trying to cover. Four is a lot of money. It's like a hundred thousand dollars. But I'm kind of shooting a little, I don't think I need more than four, so I'm trying to get the top end. If you guys shoot it down to two units or one unit, I will go with whatever you guys think is the most appropriate and cost-effective. But four seems to make the most sense with the request that we have, and we can really use as a force multiplier throughout the city.
Okay, I return to the Public Records Act part of it, is how would you deal with that since the data would be public? And how would we narrow that?
So I, I just want to say again, I'm not asking for Flock tonight. This is a discussion and a first-touch kind of thing about what this is about. We will come back to this. I'm hoping our legislature does something very similar to our traffic cameras that we have currently right, right now. But we will deal with whatever public disclosure it is, but if it becomes too exhaustive on our staff, which PDRs are already a lot of work, then I don't want to go this route. And it's, I've got to look at the return of investment of what the Flock system does as opposed to what does it do to our capacity for our staff. If it, if it's pretty good, I want to do it. If it's too much, I don't do it.
Because it's, it looks like as soon as you use the ALPR that that is public data. So that means if you're using it for whatever, if that becomes public. So somebody could use it for searching for someone or.
So it's just like our cameras right now, our body worn cameras, it's all subject to public disclosure, but they have stricter rules. So over the years, they've made the disclosure a little bit more restrictive. It used to be that the cameras were, anybody can ask for anything as much as they want, but that was so intensive on staff that they, you have to have certain reasons for those restrictions. I would think that going, Flock would go down that road if the legislature decided that they created a bill to create those kind of exemptions. Also, the data, I believe, Colton, we can set for how long we keep data. So if we keep it for thirty days, after that, it's gone. We don't have it. So we only have to work within a thirty-day period. How much data that is, I don't know. I've never worked with the system yet. And how, how easy is it to produce? So if they, if somebody asks for these dates, these times for these vehicles, beyond the privacy issue, because I have major concerns there, but just giving that data, maybe it's an easy process. I'm not sure because I haven't done it. Privacy-wise, yes, I absolutely agree. I mean, there's going to be some very, what's the word, stalker kind of ways about doing things, about asking for a plate and finding out where people drive to, those kind of things are very concerning. So that's where the legislation needs to drop in and say, hey, these are the kind of the guardrails that they're going to put on it.
Councilmember Lebo, and then Colton will come to you in a second.
It's a couple of questions. So is Flock an add-on, meaning that you just added as a subscription? Or do you have to actually add equipment to the sign?
Both. So the units can take the camera system, the hardware optionally. And so that's why I'm coming to, with, because this originally was, I wanted to have this full unit, and then Flock started becoming a national discussion. Those are hardware units that attach to these trailers, so they're optional. And then the subscription is using all of the data. So once it's all gathered using Flock's system, that's where the subscription comes in.
Okay, the second one was, I thought I read that Kenmore was going to deploy local traffic cameras. Do these have that capability?
I have not looked at that. I don't see why it wouldn't be.
So I mean, is it something that?
Could be done?
Yes, in terms of where we put traffic cameras. Because one of the things I've noticed is that traffic camera lines vary seasonally and by location. There's some cameras that in a month they have no tickets.
True.
And then you realize, well, that's because it's August and not September.
So I'm, I'm going to research if we can put the automated traffic cameras on those units and get an answer to that. I do know that in order for us to actually use them, you need to do traffic studies and equity studies, all that kind of stuff.
Right, so the question is, what has Kenmore done? Because what happens is, you know, it's a good thing. People reduce speeds, but then the cameras no longer serve the.
Purpose of slowing vehicles down.
Administrator Hill, research Kenmore on this.
And more studies, okay, should say identified to their traffic studies, did equity studies on those, and they moved down. Roughly a quarterly basis, and it's to address exactly that concern, so stay with people, start behaving, so just.
So when we think about traffic calming, we might think about the larger picture, which is what would we need to do to be able to do that? Though that the cameras in some places, the text cameras, you've got to stay. And that if we're going to purchase these, then can we put that capability in them? I assume it's all the same camera, more about subscription.
I will check. I mean, if it's happening with Kimore, then it obviously can be done. I don't know if they use ATS fives, these units. I'll check.
Right, so the.
That's a great question, Councilmember. I think, I think that we've done, we're doing, just completed the studies for Equity on the two state highways, the Equity studies for the other corridors. So the question would be whether or not the authorization by the council could be by corridor or by specific location, et cetera. So I think some cameras definitively have some sort of workaround. So, so let me get to Colton for a second, and then that's more real. Want to talk about Flock?
Yeah, I just wanted to, to give a quick, just coverage on public records, because I know this is a big topic. When it comes down to handling the requests, our team here at Flock understands the volume that the cities are now receiving because of the ruling by the Skagit County appellate court. So we've defined a new system on our side where your records clerk or any officer could just reach out directly to us. They submit a request to this platform called Codex for the specific date, time, and, you know, window of, of time that they are requesting. And then they put in an urgent request, and we actually grab the data, preserve it for you, and then we can just hand it over to you when you need to fulfill the public records request. So that's kind of our workaround right now, but we do understand, obviously, how critical it is to get legislative solution in place for a long-term solution. And I think that's why Chief and I both agree that we're just kind of waiting to see how things play out because we want to do what's best for the city and make sure that this isn't a lift on you, but also giving you, you know, the, the force, the force multiplier that Chief's talking about in public safety that LPR can provide.
Thank you, Colton. Councilmember Riddle.
Yeah, going back to the, just the traffic camera collection. So it looks like it is collecting the data locally, and then you will go collect it with a phone and an app or something of that nature. Do you know how long the data, how much data can be stored, like how many days data can be stored there before you go pull it?
I don't know that exact number. It's typically been between three and seven days that we've been gathering data off the data collectors themselves. But this is a more robust system than the little small collectors. So I would assume it's going to be a lot longer. The ones that are currently installed where you see the speed readout signs, except for One Eighty Seventh, all of them have data collection, and throughout the year, we go out when we need to, and it's about thirty days that are on there. So I would assume this is probably in that timeframe, it's about thirty days.
Okay, and then, so, and they do come with a solar panel, so that does extend their battery life out when they're not under a tree.
That is what I'm asking for. Yeah, is the solar panel solution, because then it can stay out there a lot longer than, than when we need.
So I guess the other question before I finish my thought here is, what on this quote is optional, and what is like the base requirement?
So there's basically two things going on here. There's a trailer, and then there's the speed sign. And so those are two units put together. So you can buy just the trailer, don't know what you'd use it for. You can buy just the sign, and then how would you put it out there? So it's kind of those two units. Then they have the Bluetooth wireless, I think it's through Verizon where you can connect up web, through the web and get that information. Or the, the officer can go out there and grab the data through Bluetooth. I believe you probably can download it hardwired as well. But you can say no Bluetooth, so that would be an optional thing to it. Then the, there's a software that goes with the system. When you download it, it will give you the graphs and all that you need. Generally, what we do is because we have a traffic engineer, we grab all the data, we don't care what it looks like, we just give it to him raw, and then he gives us the good reports. But we can use their software to do that, so that might be something that's optional there as well.
Thank you for that.
We need to move on here to budget. Colleagues, just, just for clarif, clarity. We're talking about the trailers and the traffic camera, the reader boards. The Flock conversation is a bigger one. The administration and the police department is very cognizant of the sensitivities surrounding the use of Flock and other concerns about privacy. From my perspective and from the administration's perspective, these trailers are an opportunity for us to get some things in place. One Ninety Seventh, other places where we can move around and say, you're, you're doing the right job, or you're not doing the right job, folks, as you're driving along the roads, as well as saying, you know, it's icy, slow down. There's lots of different ways for these, these trailers to be deployed. The Flock system is, it's really a completely different animal. So I think this is a good, good place and a very well-thought-out purchase by a department or an use of the funds from the O two fund. So it goes right back into public safety on the streets. Chief, any last words?
Just, I'll be coming back to you if, if this is something that you'd like to purchase, because we would. The Flock system, just remember, this is very, very similar to our body worn cameras. It was just the same thing of privacy and who's going to be on video and redactions and public disclosure. Whole entire conversation we have with public, or with our cameras is not. Uh with our cameras is not a whole lot different here. Um there is the question of like who can access what, but. Um we would have it locked down. So thank you for um listening. Participating, and I know we've got to get to uh finance now.
Thanks, Chief, really appreciate it. Hey, thanks, Colton, appreciate your time.
Thanks, Colton.
Yeah.
Thank you, everyone. Thanks for having me on.
Take care. So, work it on, welcome. Hopefully, you get enough time here.
It's a, it's just a physical copy of the actual proviso. That I'm bringing back forward to just have. Open it up for a conversation, actually more of, of an informal conversation to bring it back. For um council, it's actually, this is more of for you. So as we walk into the mid biennial budget um. Conversations that we also have this as part of that conversation. And if we. That I'm just, I guess I could just stop talking.
So Director Vaughn, thank you. This is, again, your work from last budget season. Bringing it back to you is a tee up for the mid by adjustment. And thinking about the, you know, fiscal realities of where we are as a community. And some of these things were contingent on various things happening, some things are happening, some they do not. So um. Director Vaughn wanted to make sure that we had the opportunity to consider these things that get refreshed. Um we can walk through, maybe we should just walk through these, Director Vaughn.
Sure.
Let's just do it really quickly and then let's take them one by one.
Yeah.
Questions.
To start, there's the climate coordinator and the city put this in the proviso, um they did. The team enacted passing the utility tax, or I guess I should say a service tax. Um on the solid waste disposal that um. Republic does submit to the city on a monthly basis. And the reason why it came back and we hit a pause was to kind of evaluate what that revenue is looking like. After a year's worth of, of collection. And I'll say almost a year's worth of collection, um because we're not quite there. And um it is coming in, that number was provided directly by um. Wendy, I believe, from Republic. It's Wendy, right? Okay, Wendy and her team brought the number um uh forward for us to estimate. And it is coming in um on a conservative level. So um that being said, I, as far as what was put in the original budget of around. Just under five hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars is what was in the original budget. And that is tracking. We are already at for almost forty-two percent. Um of that budget, so that is a, a very, that's a conservative number. Um, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna give a high, keep going on a high level.
Sure.
Or do we want to stop?
Colleagues, questions?
I'm open to whatever.
Counselor.
The dollar amount for that forty-two percent. So I'm sorry, done, two hundred and seventeen thousand. Thank you very much.
Uh go to Councilman Furton and then Councilman Lebo, we had to say that first.
Hi, well, thank you very much, Director Vaughn, for the report, and I'm wondering if um. As the proviso states, we've accumulated enough to actually hire the climate coordinator in the next year.
Was that a question?
Yeah, yes.
I, I think.
Have you, have we accumulated enough to hire the climate?
Um, I think that's council's call. I can just present the numbers. I think the, the dollar amount is yes.
Yes, the amount exceeds the cost of that.
Okay, that is the actual question I wanted to ask. Thanks for rephrasing it for me, Administrator Hill.
Thank you, Deputy Refrigerator.
So thank you. So what is the uh budget for this employee when you account per direct of all the benefits and other costs?
Sorry, I don't know that off the top of my head, but I do have it. Hold on. I think it's a, I'm not, I'm gonna stop. Hundred and fifty-one thousand five hundred is the budget.
But that represents that direct plus their, their benefits, but what about the overhead costs?
Uh that is.
Isn't that fully loaded?
This is as far as uh an estimate on a salaries and benefit conversation. That's only, that's only factoring in salaries and benefits. Um I think the question is actually desk space, i- is that more of desk space, computers? Um uh no, that is not.
Can you think about in terms of what is the total cost of this first relationship to the revenue?
I don't have an answer for you. That is a great question.
Because when we budget, we need to budget the total cost. Not just the.
That's what we're bold.
Um yes, also on budgeting, is, can you remind me, is there an expectation that this position would be partially self-funded? In the sense that the climate coordinator would be funding grants and bringing money into the city, which would then help to pay for them.
I would say that's very difficult to answer at this point in time. A lot of grants don't let you write your own salary into them, so I would say at this point I would not count on that. Um I would count on maybe programs that the climate coordinator could. Bring to bear would be funded by that, but not their portion of their salary.
Colleagues, other questions? We, we're gonna run out of time here very quickly. Let's, let's go to court staff, please.
So uh court staff, actually, I'm just gonna go through this quickly because uh our HR director. Has a much more detailed presentation that you guys are gonna hear at the council meeting. So basically, I am just gonna do a little precursor, the court staff and the PD, this was all based at. A very early estimate of how to come up with a number to gauge FTE counts to tickets. Um, I think their first estimate when they went about presenting. That they thought that these tickets would trigger this threshold, I think um. I think it was ambitious that uh not realizing all of the additional work that was gonna go on. In, in addition to the tickets, because it wasn't changing the workload that was already in existence. Um and so I'll just leave it at that and let Shannon probably expand a little bit more, because she's been working directly with them. Um in the actual council meeting. And then the PD um. Traffic camera reviewer. Um, again, these are all tied to the additional traffic um. Tickets uh and being able to staff and have a, an officer review every single ticket. Um it has to go through a police officer and um so after evaluating that. Um and doing a, a first um swipe with how we thought it was going to work, then we trued up to how it actually is working. As far as staff, every, for the most part, certain staff members are, you know, reviewing certain tickets. So then each officer has a small allocation of their salary that is allocated to that traffic safety camera, but. And um.
On the uh proviso, item three contingent on um use of civilian personnel for infraction review, that was something that we thought might be possible. Uh in the, in the legal, are we able to do that or still have to be a commissioned officer reviewing them?
Nope, it doesn't have to be, and you can do that. When we originally had this project uh that we're talking about, that was one of the options we were looking at. We went with the traffic support officer, hundred percent paid out of the um O O two fund. And she is doing a good job. We've been monitoring every single month, tracking how much work product. She's about the sixty percent range. Uh for the most part, so that means forty percent of the tickets that are being done are by the officers. So they have a small portion above that particular period, but I, it's a long discussion about staffing and all that kind of stuff I won't go into. But we decided that the traffic support officer has been able to handle it. If we add more in the future, that's gonna be a different discussion, but where we're at is in a good spot.
Thank you, Chief.
That's right.
So just to clarify. All right.
No, no, please.
Uh just to clarify that, so there's not an app in the mid-year uh in the mid biennial, not from us?
Uh, not from the police department. There's more to come from the court, yes. There is an additional conversation that. To support the staff that, of the need. And that goes into walking into, actually, I'm just gonna say it, with the judge, the judge's increase, pro tem increase, that conversation that was. At the last, a previous meeting, I'm sorry, I don't know exactly which one. Um but that, that the city administrator brought forward, so there is. Um the expansion of the judge that will be directly allocated to the O O two fund, because that is where the demand is coming from. An additional budget for the pro tem for that additional about point one FTE. In order to support the review and the quick turnaround of these tickets, um in addition to. What it takes to do it on the front line as far as staff. Um and, and that conversation, Shannon is more equipped to go into detail with you. At the next.
At the seven o'clock.
At the seven, yes.
Your best, Councilor Riddle.
Hopefully, clarification, um we were able to, we were able to get the um higher ticket value for repeat offenders now. Has that started to come through?
No, that's not been implemented. We just pulled the trigger, um bare mobility, had a change in staff, their staff figured out that they could implement. The recidivism, it basically doubles the rate. They're working on that. We checked the ROI, it's costing us some money to implement that, but um paper itself, we have about. Give two thousand. Month roughly is the recidivism rate out of all the tickets I've taken.
But we haven't seen that starting yet.
I'm sorry.
Mine, mine is just quick, so I know that you uh weren't able to come up with a fully burdened cost for the climate term year now, but, but you will soon. So that we will know what the total amount might be.
We can anticipate, uh we can reach out to other cities, have this, figure out training, et cetera, we know what. Desk spaces, classes. Currently, I don't know where we can put a desk, but figured.
Colleagues, other questions? I think one of the things I would just say, just as a reminder from the previous budget season, court staff and PD traffic camera viewer. These triggers were um, you know, thresholded by the council to say, if this happens, then we need to move forward with. Additional hires, and I think we're at that place, and the good news. Is amongst other considerations, there, the revenue is coming in in a place that we need to make sure this, I think actually in the court situation. They're already a little bit behind in terms of hiring on that level, so we need to move on these things and. Consideration of expansion of the program which you've had before, before, previously. Um is also going to put pressures on the system, we're gonna make sure we stay ahead of the curve now that we have some generalities.
Just a quick reminder, we have already begun hiring staff in courts and PD, I mean, this is already been. Through by council, really, um for tonight, the proviso discussion is around that, I, for nature.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh maybe not here, but is there an opportunity to get an update on the um. Uh place uh with regard to, I think it was when council. Uh twenty fifteen. Yeah, in terms of any, uh, we could do requirements for branding as well as an option for sales taxes.
That will come from city administrator Hill on a particular part, and you can talk about it, because we know the same thing.
Yeah, I'll give you a quick update on that. The chief and his staff have been working to make sure that they're qualified um for that. Um a report that I got out of the city of Kent last week at a regional meeting, it's the way the legislation is currently written. Every contract that your city has. That supports public safety, so King County jails also has to qualify, or the city does not qualify. Kent has been denied qualification because King County jails does not qualify. There's concern at the regional level that King County jails may not go through the hoops to get qualified. And it would just be King County jails, every jail, every partner that we have through the police, which is currently written, has to qualify so that the city qualifies. It's something that's gonna come up at the next legislative session. I know it's, it's a nightmare. We can go through the steps. Council can take action to um take the, the sales tax portion. But until they straighten this out, it's not gonna flow. Kent has already realized that they, they were. Going to meet the timeline, so they collected the first part of twenty twenty-six, they now will opt um. So it's, it's a political nightmare.
I guess maybe I'm confused, um because they're tied together, you have to meet the qualifications in order to implement the, the sales tax.
Correct.
Uh and in order to get the grant, so.
At, at the Lake Forest Park Police Department's qualifications were virtually there.
Yeah.
But a lot of departments are in the same spot we are, so then they put in that they're ready to go.
Yeah.
And then they got denied by CJTC because uh they have all these particular findings that they haven't met, and one of them was this one, which is a big portion of it. So if King County Jail or King County Marine Patrol or any, any kind of contract that we use, doesn't meet certain, the same requirements. Then we're not able to move forward with it.
Move forward with either.
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 Sales tax or the grants.
So no one's moving forward.
No, nobody's moving forward.
And it's, it's a huge topic, uh WASPIC this last week, and the legislation, uh our attorney general has been looking at it too, so.
It was just the way it was.
Solution.
Yeah.
Deputy Refrigerating.
Yes, thanks. Um this is a little off topic, but uh the, the bu- bu- budget proviso list that I'm seeing. Um has an additional section on recommended budget savings that I don't see on the one online, so can you scroll a little bit further down? Thanks, okay, appreciate it, thank you.
And just a reminder, those were the cuts that were done. With the adoption of the current budget. Colleagues, questions or comments? We got like two or three minutes, so then we head upstairs. And uh, Councilman Lebo, your comments about the. Qualification are, are really uh um timely. We were having conversations about that, meeting with the. Um county executive uh elect today. And the coordination between the cities and the agencies uh is essential, not only were these kinds of programs that are. Many are offered by the state, but also other programs too, where people, there's these disconnects and uh it's, it's a really. Challenging situation and um well-intentioned by the legislature, but. When the departments have to jump through additional hoops and then they find out after that. That other uh coordinating agencies are not qualified. It's a game of catch-up for everybody, so it is challenging. And hopefully it'll get resolved. Think to the chief's point earlier, there's a lot of things at the legislative level. Uh state legislative level that I hope we get tuned, dialed in here. Well, that's come over the last five years or so. Colleagues, other questions? I want to make sure I didn't miss our friends online. Ashton, Tracy. Ellen's there. Okay, we're good, we're adjourned, we're moving upstairs. Thank you, everybody.